To go.
Okay.
Okay. Ready, everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call this July 22 meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Would you please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. Would General Counsel please call a roll?
Yes, good evening. President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Bonbright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Strozier. And Director Leon is absent tonight.
Thank you.
We have a quorum.
Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion to adopt.
My second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. There are no recognition items tonight. Item number seven, report to the board, 7.1 security update.
I'm going to start and just barely start. And so what I want you, President Cobb, members of the board, I am going to just thank you for the opportunity to share today on the safety and security report for Tacoma Public Schools. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background to refresh your memory and also that of our public. And then Assistant General Counsel Malik Benrow is going to go through the details for you. And Malik has graciously and forcefully chaired our team that has worked on this issue, done a great job. So last year, you remember, we had two significant incidents that came to light in which police officers were charged with using excessive force. Nationally, the tragic and unnecessary death of George Floyd in Minneapolis during an arrest began a flashpoint in our country. And then locally, news of the death of Manny Ellis during an arrest led to similar questions about police tactics. As a result, we had a significant number of Tacoma community members that began to advocate for the removal of five Tacoma Public Officers that we have in our five comprehensive high schools. At the time, during the COVID, we had no students in our schools, which gave us an opportunity and time to take a thoughtful look at our longstanding contract with Tacoma Public Schools for those school resource officers. We also conducted surveys of our parent community, staff, and students, and those surveys showed some strong feelings about not having police officers stationed in our school. And at the same time, we continually heard that keeping students and staff safe was paramount. And in addition, as a key part of this review, you asked us not to look at the contract with Tacoma Police Department in isolation, but instead to take a more comprehensive look at our full safety and security system for the district and to come back to you with the recommendation. So that's why we're here tonight. Our review has been completed. Our committee has looked at a long range of options, and I have a recommendation to present. And we know that Dr. Christie is the superintendent, but since you had me start the review, I'm presenting and actually introducing Assistant General Counsel Benrow tonight. So there's no action needed tonight. In the future, there may be necessary board action on a contract and collective bargaining agreement, but Malik will explain that in more detail. So I'd love to turn it over to Malik Benrow to describe the recommendation in more detail. Thanks, Malik.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Santoro. We could get. Oh.
I did not have the key one.
Gotcha. Oh, got it there.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. Thank you, Superintendent Santoro. So what I've done is prepared a graphic organizer to sort of help give a visual understanding of Superintendent Santoro's recommendations. And we'll start with what you see now is the current status that we've had over the last several years. We have a multi-layered security apparatus at the Tacoma School District. The SRO positions that Superintendent Santoro talked about is what you see on the left. So we've had five SROs, one at each of our comprehensive high schools, and one supervising sergeant these last several years. We've had five school patrol officers. We've talked about this at previous study sessions and board meetings. These are the internal district staff who operate on a mobile response unit capacity. We've had 25 CSOs, so it's either campus security officers at our secondary schools, middle and high schools. So the recommendation that Superintendent Santoro would like to make has a couple different opponents to it. So first is.
Malik?
Yes?
Can I know for one second?
Yes, please.
Just to be clear, the SROs are employees of the Tacoma Police Department.
That is.
And they are, you know, uniformed officers who are at the five.
That is correct. We acquired the support of the SROs through a five-year contract with the Tacoma Police Department to have those officers in each of our comprehensive high schools and that sergeant overseeing those SRO officers. And so the direction that Superintendent Santoro is bringing to us as a recommendation is that we look to transition that into a program where our police support looks a little bit differently, moving from an SRO at each of our comprehensive high schools assigned as their work location to an emergency response and an on-call type relationship where officers would be available to liaise with school staff, building leadership. And rather than being in charge of just one of the schools, they would be available sort of elementary, middle, and high school. So we refer to those as school liaisons, as you see on the bottom there. Again, this is quite different from the SRO program where you would have an officer stationed in high schools. These officers would be available on an on-call basis, respond to a call for service in a patrol capacity and as needed. Some of this came out of recommendations from school staff, which acknowledged that there were critical pieces of that SRO relationship which were really going to be important to maintain. And two real big pieces came out of that. One was the ability to have a person near hand, close by, to respond in these emergency situations, both safety and medical, paramount to the safety of our students. We heard that loud and clear from some of the recommendations we got from school staff. In addition to comments that were made, thousands of comments that were made by community echoing the importance of safety of our students. And the second piece was the need for consultation. So school staff were really clear that the ability that they had had these last several years to consult with an SRO on questions around incidents which may have required a call to police, the ability to have that consultation was critically important. So we wanted to find a way to maintain that as well. And so this school liaison position would allow for that. Last thing I'll say here is the work continues. We bring the recommendation to you today, and as Superintendent Santoro says, the work continues, and we will have board action on some of the continuing pieces. We are working with the Tacoma Police Department to craft some really specific details, granular level details about what this will look like. That work continues, and they've been incredibly open to partnering with us to support us in whatever way we need. They've been open to reforms, to a change in scope, very, very open and willing partners in this process. The second of Superintendent Santoro's recommendations that she'd like me to talk about is a change from our internal security staff, the scope of responding to calls for service. So as you see on top, we've had five school patrol officers over the last several years. And you can see a transitioning to a system where we would have two campus support specialists and four CSO twos. CSO stands for Campus Security Officers. So we'll start with a campus support specialist. This is a position which doesn't exist that we will be creating in conjunction with our union that governs these bargaining units, where that person's primary responsibility would be to intervene on an on-call basis where we have situations with students that involve a safety element. So this is a person who will be trained specifically on de-escalation, youth mental health. There's some really good training pieces that are going to come out of that, that that would be a person who we could deploy to respond to some of these safety incidents that involve our children. And the four CSO positions that you see on the right, this is an acknowledgement and a sort of a response to a lot of the feedback we got about the desire, the need for a community-oriented response to some of our calls for service. So what we have heard is it's not uncommon for some of the same or similar issues to arise within a school community, so the school location and the community that surrounds it. An example, you know, there could be location-based issues that arise around safety where it would be really helpful to have a community-oriented CSO who's familiar with that school, familiar with the leadership at the elementary, at the middle, at the high, that can kind of tackle issues with a community focus, and then sort of look for a way to end the, you know, rather than just responding to the call here or there, but can kind of dig in in a community-oriented sense to figure out what's causing some of this safety issue and how can we resolve it. And that last level, the CSOs that we have, Superintendent Santoro's recommendation is that we continue with our CSO program as is. So we have that support staff available in our middle school and our high schools. We would continue that at the level of service that we have now. There is a change that's not noted here on the graphic, but that would be important to know, which is that there was a law that was passed last year, House Bill 1214, that governs the school security personnel at every public school district in the state. For the first time, the state has taken a hand in regulating what that position looks like. So we will see a lot of changes to those CSO positions responsive to the legal changes that take effect. Some of the prongs take effect in September and others take effect in March. So we will be looking at changes, working with the union closely on making sure that when those legal requirements come due in compliance, it's expected that we were prepared to report to the state that we're in compliance with those provisions. So just to follow up on what Superintendent Santoro says, the work continues. We hope to, in the coming weeks and months, bring the detail that you expect of us and present the board action that would be necessary to effectuate some of these changes. Should this be consistent with your direction for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Malik. You mentioned a couple of times that a lot of these, the specifics of these recommendations seem to be worked out through some negotiations, but I still want to open up for any clarifying questions from members of the board. Start with Director or Vice President Bonbright. Any questions?
Nope. Thanks so much for the clarity. I love the visual presentation. It's much easier to understand, and I like that the community, the campus support specialists will have, you know, kind of a mental health focus as well as other things to be able to deal with social motion issues. Thank you.
Director Bon, I mean, Director Bonbright, you just spoke. Director Keating?
I don't have any questions. I am really grateful the graphic is quite helpful because the acronyms can get lost in themselves. And I also think that, I know that we've, over time, still tried to learn what all the acronyms are, and I think for the community, this is really helpful. So, and I know that you've put an enormous amount of work into this, Malik, and I just want to thank you for that.
Director Strozier?
I'm good. I just echo the thanks for the work behind it. I know it's a lot of work to go, but we got the right people in place to make this stuff happen. So thank you.
Thank you. I have to also give thanks to, we had a number, literally thousands of community respondents that shared their thoughts. We had a number of community groups that were very vocal and were happy to let us know what they thought and what changes they felt were necessary. We've had a lot of staff who have given their time on their calendar to meet internally as a staff group with community. Really, that's where I think the appreciation should be going to. Thank you.
And I'll just say thank you one more time again, just for putting in the time that this issue needed and for getting to such a thoughtful recommendation that tried to balance all of the perspectives that we heard. So appreciate you and all of the team for putting in the time and effort to give this what it needs. Superintendent Santoro?
I just wanted to also mention that I talked to Elizabeth Polly, our city manager, and I think one of the things the board was real clear about is they wanted to work in partnership with TBD. And I just wanted to let you know, I told her I would send her the slides after it was, you know, shared publicly, but she is so eager to work with us and share job descriptions and look at some similar concepts. So I think that's great, the way she, you know, the department is willing to work with us in partnership.
Thank you. Thank you again, Malik.
Thank you.
That we will move on to item number eight, Superintendent's report, 8.1, 2021, 2022 budget presentation.
Tonight, we are joined by our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Medina, who is here to give us the 21, 22 budget presentation. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Medina.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening and thank you. I intend to give you a very brief overview of our budget. We have gone through this a number of times together.
Ooh, there it is. I didn't think it was on. So I just want to share for those viewing at home, while we may go through this material relatively quickly, the expectation is that if you have interested, if you find things interesting or want to get additional details, you can visit our website, tacomaschools.org/budget and get a lot of details behind what's here. But this is in presentation for our budget hearing, that it comes right after this, and just to give an introduction to that. So our goals for this evening are to inform you and the public of what is in the budget, that it will be up for adoption this evening. This is our recommended budget, and we will be presenting that for you. Because we do our budgeting by priorities process, we have the opportunity to understand how that aligns back to our strategic initiatives, and this is a representation of how we've aligned this budget to our strategic goals and how that relates to our previous budget years. We are required by the state and through the generally accepted accounting principles gap to participate in fund accounting. Each of our funds has its own separate checking account. We will be talking about all of these funds, with the exception of the trust fund this evening. The trust funds are held, other people's money that we hold on their behalf, like scholarship funds and things like that. But the general fund is covering our daily operations, everything that we do on a daily basis. Debt Service Fund covers the principal and interest of our bonds. The Associated Student Body is funding that we hold on behalf of the students. They earn and raise those dollars and spend them at their request. The Transportation Vehicle Fund buys our yellow buses pretty much exclusively. And then our capital and technology levies cover, those are the levies that are approved by voters, and they cover our technology purchases in any of our buildings and small capital projects to improve our buildings. This budget this evening, our recommended budget, has revenues of $553,909,806. As I mentioned previously, that's in previous presentations. That's $57.5 million more than what we've budgeted in the past for revenues. Primarily, those increases are for ESR dollars. Our expenditure is planned for $587,183,999, and that is $84.3 million more than what we have had in previous year. But again, those are ESR dollars that are helping to increase those expenditures. Fund balance drawdown, we're planning to spend $33.3 million roughly of our fund balance. Keep in mind that $3.8 million of that will be for curriculum and instruction, that's pretty typical, and our carryover of funds like LAP or CTE funds that carry over from one year to the next is planned for around $2.5 million. Our general fund revenues come in many different forms. We see state revenues are our primary funding source. About 65.5% of our budget comes from the state resources, 13.5% from local levy, 18% will come from federal resources, that's both our ESR and other federal dollars. And then we have two tiny little boxes on the right, 1.5% for local non-tax and 1.3% for other revenues. On our expenditures, we have about 76% of our budget that will be allocated to certificated staff, classified staff, and our benefits. Typically, our budget will see 85% of our resources go towards those supports for staff and benefits. Because of ESR, we budgeted into the supplies and materials as a holding place for it, and so that sort of throws our budget off a little bit this year. And those are one-time funds, so we don't intend to fund a large amount of staffing out of it. Moving on to our general fund four-year, the four-year budget is a requirement that's expected by the state. We actually include a detailed breakdown in our F-195-F, which is at the back of the F-195, which is posted on our budget website. It's a riveting document, if anybody wants to go and check that out. For our recommended budgets for other funds, in the Debt Service Fund, we are recommending an expenditure limit of $60,937,577, and that will pay the principal and interest that is coming due on the bonds. Those are bonds that were issued in 2013 and 2020 primarily. In our Associated Student Body, we're anticipating $3,434,640 worth of expenditures. In our Transportation Vehicle Fund, we anticipate purchasing six buses at $780,000. And in our Capital and Technology Levy, we intend to spend approximately $164,361,500. That's our expenditure authority. This is the four-year outlook that's required for our other funds as well. And I do want to mention that our budget takes a considerable amount of time, energy, and effort, and there are a number of contributors. This is a seven-month process. We began in January, and all of these groups and activities have occurred that have helped us build this budget. This is not something that we threw together in the last couple of weeks. So I do want to make sure that I quickly thank the board and the community for their participation and engagement in our budget development. The superintendent and cabinet have been instrumental in making sure that we're accommodating and accounting for all of the things that are upcoming and changing. Our program and budget managers have done an amazing job of making requests and evidencing why they need the resources that they need. And finally, our budget team is just phenomenal. So I want to make a big thank you to Kristen Bell, Jody Berry, Denise Hall, Natasha Edwards, and Diane Taylor. Thank them for all their work. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to turn to members of the board for questions or comments. Vice President Bonbright?
Well, first, I also want to thank everyone, and I know I participated in the budget webinar last week, and it was fascinating and really interesting. So actually, this information is, the more we hear it, the more clear it becomes. But for those that maybe didn't participate in the webinar, public webinar, and the public hearing, which we had a couple of weeks ago, it's all, who knows, but most recently, we had one. I was wondering, maybe if you could explain the numbers on slide three, which we go back, and it's just interesting how it looks like, for example, it looks like early learning is getting less of an investment, and I know that it's not, it isn't, it's just that we're having a bigger, because of the ESR money, that there's a bigger pot of money, so it's the percentage of that pot is less, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's absolutely correct. I think that we lose a little bit of comparability this year due to the ESR funds. So when you're looking at the resources to last year compared to this coming year, what you find is the ESR funds threw things off a little bit, specifically in academic excellence. I think another point to that is we moved a couple of our packages of finances out of the operations and into health and safety when you updated your strategic initiatives last year, and so that throws it off just a little bit as well.
That was, and then my other question or comment was if you go to slide seven again, that's the one where it shows, yeah, that one. I think you can see the ESR box is nice and big, and that's wonderful, but it will go away. It's a three-year, we have to spend it in three years, and so then it'll go away. And then, I guess, the big's the question, what then?
Right. So those dollars are intended to be enhancements and above and beyond our regular resources. They're not intended to replace any of our levy dollars or any of our state funding. So in theory, a lot of the services that we provide are really intended to provide temporary pandemic relief or recovery associated with that. With good planning and a lot of luck, maybe, maybe a little luck, we'll end up without needing those resources in the future, but they will expire, and that box will go away.
Thank you. Great job, team.
Thank you. Director Keating?
I don't have any questions. I do feel like we've gone through this material over the last multiple months a lot. And I really appreciate the level of time that's been taken to help, you know, inform us, but also help inform the public, because the recovery funds, it's very confusing, and it's a lot of money when you hear it. And so I think like this has been really helpful, and having the budget calculator as a resource for people, and the webinar, I just echo Vice President Bonbright, the webinar was really well done, and the breakout groups, of course, wish I could have gone to the other breakout groups just to hear, you know, the conversations and the questions, but I just understand the amount of effort that went into just that specific event, and I just want to thank the team for doing that.
Thank you. And I would add to that, the budget webinar is now put together and on the web. Yeah? Yeah? If you go to our website and you look at the Find It Fast feature, type in webinar, it'll take you to our webinar page, and I believe that the video is available there. You can watch all of the sessions that occurred during the webinar. So that information is not lost, or it wasn't a one-time thing. It's accessible for anything. And I think it's important to note too, that a budget is a living document. You know, we don't just say, this is the budget, and we stick to it because this is what we said we were going to do. Of course, we want to try to meet our goals, but we have to be flexible and adaptable in any year.
Director Strozier?
No, that was actually my question, if the webinar was live for folks who only participated in certain sections. So you took care of that for me.
Thanks.
And I just want to thank the team again for all the work. I don't have any questions either, but honestly, given the fact that adopting the budget is one of our primary responsibilities, I'd be worried if it didn't take you seven months.
Right.
So just thank you for putting in such hard work, being so diligent and thorough about the process. The budgeting by priorities approach continues to be like impressive and efficient and effective. So thank you for your commitment to that and continue every year to get better and better at the community engagement in this process, because again, we wouldn't be confident in adopting this budget and that we are doing what we are supposed to do in terms of our fiduciary responsibilities if you didn't put in the work and leading the team. So thank you for everything that goes into pulling this together.
Thank you. I accept that on behalf of my team.
Any other comments?
President Cobb, I think it was right before COVID that the board adopted a new process for the budget and the policy. And so this is our first chance to implement that. And so you can see a number of steps that Ms. Medina has taken from that policy and implicated, or implicated, implemented, excuse me. So although it was tough sometimes getting feedback and having people participate live in the past, we've used technology and adjusted as well. And so I just want to thank Ms. Medina and then, of course, Superintendent Santoro for her leadership to get us to this place. It is a great opportunity to have these additional resources, and at the same time, we will have to continue to be good stewards over the next couple of years, because those resources will not be ongoing. And so we will have to think about investments that give us boosts, that help us with recovery, but also develop long-range plans to make sure that our core mission is still established. So I want to thank you as well as our Chief Financial Officer and our Superintendent for getting us to this place.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We will move on to item number nine, public hearing for the budget. The Board of Directors of Tacoma School District will hold a public hearing regarding the 2021, 2022 budget. Anyone may appear and be heard for or against any part of the proposed 2021, 2022 budget. A copy of the proposed resolution is on file in the Budget Office at the Central Administration Building, and a copy will be furnished to any person who may request it. Do we have any members of the public signed up to give comment?
I do not believe so. We might want to just give a courtesy in case someone's in the restroom, a call in maybe a minute?
Yep. Silent minutes are long, but I'll give a call one more time. Is there anyone interested in giving comment tonight on the budget? And again, this is our second budget hearing. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. But just a reminder for anyone listening, all the materials to support this adoption process can be found on our website, including, most recently, the webinar recording. So we invite you to check those resources out and know that we will be here a year from now doing this again. So if you're interested in getting involved, just let us know. Item number 10, members of the public wishing to address the board? Nope, we are still using alternative protocols. We have two options for you to give public comment. Option one is in person at these open public meetings. Anyone interested in speaking will have up to three minutes to share their comments. Option number two is to submit written comment, and we have one member of the public who submitted written comment tonight. Given that it's just one, I'll go ahead and read it. Given that it's just one, I'll go ahead and read it. We have Ann Moses, who submitted a comment regarding questioning masking of students. And I assume we don't have any members of the public wanting to exercise option one? No cards?
No, no members of the public. And just for the public's information, the school board, we meet here in a school building. Maybe not everyone in the public knows that we do have students who attend classes here at Central Administration Building, and we also have student representatives. And so the school board is continuing to follow OSPI's guidance regarding masking, and so we will continue to also allow for alternate protocol for written comment.
Thank you. Item number 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 12, policy matters. 12.1, first reading of revised policy 0110, temporary modifications to policies and regulations for the 2021-2022 school year.
The district's general counsel recommends the board review the revised policy 010, 0110, and provide feedback before a second reading.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments on item 12.1, members of the board? Oh, there's no motion necessary, right?
No, since it's a first reading, I can just provide some additional background. Last year, we adopted policy 0110 in response to guidance from OSPI and the Department of Health, and this, the guidance continues to change. So we do have some guidance that's now been published for the 2122 school year. The guidance we have at this point in time is that the district will return to in-person full-time learning, that we will maintain Tacoma Online as a remote learning option. The district will comply with Department of Health guidance regarding requiring face coverings, ventilation, cleaning and disinfecting, and responding to and reporting COVID-19 cases, and to the degree possible and reasonable, physical distancing of three feet in classrooms, six feet elsewhere, and also a contingency plan that does not include physical distancing. So we want to modify this policy, not in the weeds of the details, because the details are subject to continue to change, but to make it clear that the board intends to follow the guidance of the Governor, OSPI, Department of Health, and CDC, and Labor and Industries.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about item? Vice President Bonbray?
Yeah, I just want to thank the superintendent and team for making this suggestion, because I think it does help clarify, instead of having the board have to come back and make changes to the policy all the time, this is just very clear. We will be following the guidance, and then we'll be clear about what that guidance is, and that way the public will know what to expect, and there won't be a delay. So thank you for, I think it's well worth it, thank you for coming up.
Thank you. So we will move on to item 12.2, first reading of revised regulations 1310-R, policy adoption and revision.
The district's general counsel recommends the Board of Directors review the proposed revised regulation 1310-R and provide feedback before a second reading.
Thank you. Will you give a little bit of an overview on this one, too?
Yes, absolutely. We recently revised Regulation 1310-R back in May, and the purpose was to enhance transparency, equity, and community involvement in the policy adoption and revision process. But one of the things we realized after we had done this revision is that the process itself, the board typically stays at the policy level while regulations are the purview of the superintendent. The board using a compass as its favorite tool, setting the direction of the district, where the superintendent uses a watch to make sure that everyone is staying on time. And the difference being that when the board enacts regulations, then that gets into the area of board governance and board best practices. And so we wanted to memorialize the fact that over recent years, the board has brought regulations that have to do with board governance to the board, to the public, for its approval. And so this regulation is proposing to amend and codify that practice.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, I'll just say that I appreciate this revision, or this, including this provision. I think that it's easier to get used to just doing things the way that we do them, and when people change, you don't always have institutional memory or policies that back up what you've just been doing. So I appreciate you helping us institutionalize this practice in this way. We'll move on to item number 12.3, first reading of revised regulation 1420-R, proposed agenda and consent agenda.
The district's general counsel recommends that the Board of Directors review the modified order of the agenda items under Regulation 1420-R and provide feedback before a second reading.
Can you give a little bit of context here, too?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So over time, there were some changes that were made here and there to the board's agenda. I noticed that since I've been here at the district over the last four and a half years, we have, for example, allowed for public comment at both board meetings during the month, but this regulation was outdated and said that we only allowed for public comment at one meeting. So there were a few items that were just out of date, and we wanted to make sure that the order of the agenda reflected the board's current practice.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this item? Vice President Bonbray?
And I want to thank, thank you for the process, and also because it gives us an opportunity to memorialize the fact that we're doing a land acknowledgement at the beginning of every meeting, and so now that is, is in there. So for time forward, we will make sure to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And also, just as a reminder to the public, all three of these policies and regulations are now uploaded onto the board webpage. Susan Anderson from our department has got those up and available for download and also for public comment.
Thank you.
My only comment, in thinking about like some of the changes that we've had around public comment, actually, and allowing for, just due to COVID impacts, and allowing as many different opportunities for people to, for the public to still engage throughout, while we were all remote. I think I just appreciate this because we had to be, we had to adapt and be flexible, and so this just sort of gives a foundation that allows if we, you know, need to make other adaptations, I just appreciate having this, so thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 13, financial report. A quarterly presentation on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org/departments/businessandfinance. I think, I don't know when our next quarterly report is, but future agendas, we might note it.
We'll work with the team to make sure that they're noted on future agendas.
Item number 14, curriculum instruction, 14.1, approval of contract number TSD-21-127, Hope Sparks readiness to learn in Tacoma Public Schools, September 1, 2021 through August 31, 2024.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-21-127, Hope Sparks readiness to learn contract from September 1, 2021 through August 31, 2024. Funding source, Hope Sparks. I think that's title lap.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 14.1?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this item? I just noticed that the funding source says Hope Sparks. Is that, should that be lap title, or title, or is that correct?
Yeah, it's our funding that we paid monthly invoices to Hope Sparks.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor of adopting item 14.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 14.2, approval of addendum number seven for contract TSD-17-007 with Curriculum Associates LLC.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve amendment number seven for contract TSD-17-007 with Curriculum Associates LLC. Funding source, ESER, CNI, and assessment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 14.2?
I move item 14.2.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 14.3, approval of the interlocal agreement between Central Washington University and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2021-2022 school year.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Schools, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement between Central Washington University and Tacoma Public Schools for college and the high schools from September 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 14.3?
I move to adopt 14.3.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 14.4, approval of interlocal agreement between Green River College and the Tacoma Public Schools Lincoln Tree Farm.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement, TSD-21-081, between Green River, Green River College and Tacoma Public Schools for the use of Lincoln Tree Farm from September 1, 2021 through August 31, 2023.
Is there a motion to adopt item 14.4?
I move item 14.4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 14.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15, business matters. 15.1, approval of transportation services for McKinney, Vento, and Head Start students.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to award and negotiate contracts for ALC and Hop Skip Drive.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.1?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Just have one. Under what circumstances do we provide transportation for students in the Head Start program?
For Head Start, I don't think we do anymore. I think we stopped. I think probably somebody picked the last one of these presentations up and said, we'll call it Head Start. So we might want to change the Head Start aspect of it, but we do do all the McKinney-Vento service, which is for our homeless students.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 15.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 15.2, approval of interlocal agreement between Region 8 Education Service Center.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to sign an interlocal agreement with Region 8 Educational Service Center.
Is there a motion to adopt 15.2?
I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 15.3, approval of the purchase of school buses.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the, sorry, recommends the purchase of five diesel buses and two unleaded buses for our special needs transportation. Funding source, Transportation Vehicle Fund.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.3?
I move item 15.3.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded. Any questions or comments?
I have.
Vice President Bonbray?
I saw in the budget presentation that you did earlier that there was $750,000 for purchasing buses. Is this that?
It's the same, it's the same allocation. This is actually for the current fiscal year. So it's, we have $780,000 as an outlay, and these fit into that resource.
But, and so you have it in the budget for next year for additional replacement of buses.
Right. We have a replacement cycle. The buses, they are only really eligible for reimbursement from the state for 13 years, and there's actually some different spaces, sorry, different depreciations depending on the size of the bus, but generally, it's 13 years. And so we try to keep them on a replacement cycle because it's too expensive to replace the entire fleet at once.
Thank you. I just thought it was interesting that it was seven, and seven was in the budget, so I was just going to see if it was that.
Thanks. All those in favor of adopting item 15.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. Item 15.4, approval to negotiate and award design-build, our, design-build alternative method contract with former construction company for Pools Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract to former construction company for the design-build alternative method with the Pools Project.
Is there a motion to adopt item 15.4?
I move to adopt.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item? I just have one. How often, like what's the process of pool maintenance? I know roof, I mean, I assume like roofs and that kind of stuff, but what do pools require?
It's an annual expensive process, and currently, within this agenda item, we're looking to do major renovations to five pools, so it's, it's an ongoing process yearly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 15.5, authorization for the purchase of playground equipment at Blix, Crescent Heights, Edison, Lister, and Madison Elementary Schools from one or more of the following vendors, Game Time Company, Great Western Recreation, Landscape Structures, and Northwest Playgrounds.
Just a quick overview, we have 11 playground replacements on a 2020 bond. This is the first five of those 11 replacements based on board approval today. We will have those replacements completed this summer before school start. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and/or designated to expand $300,000 for playground equipment at each of the following schools, Blix, Crescent Heights, Edison, Lister, and Madison Elementary Schools from Game Time, Landscape Structures, and Northwest Playgrounds. The total cost of all five playgrounds is $1,500,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.5?
I move to adopt item 15.5.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I just have, I just have a comment, just thinking about like new playground equipment for elementary schools. It's just exciting, and it's fun, so it feels, it just feels good.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 15.6, authorization for the purchase of lighting fixtures from consolidated electrical distributors and installation by Alt Electric Company at McKinley Elementary School.
Just a quick overview, McKinley will be utilized as a swing site for our major replacements at our schools. Currently, we're looking to upgrade the lighting system within that school so, to ensure that we can utilize it now and in future bonds. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent or designated to expand $219,187.80 for lighting fixtures from consolidated electrical distributors, INC., and $240,741.81 for installation by Alt Electric Company at McKinley Elementary School. The combined total of these expenditures equals $459,929.61.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.6?
I move item 15.6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 15.7, approval of Associated Earth Services, Inc., additional geotechnical consulting services for ongoing underground injection control, well construction, and field subgrade preparation in the amount of $17,840 for the Hunt Middle School replacement project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve Associated Earth Sciences Incorporated supplemental geotechnical consulting services at Hunt Middle School. The increase of the purchase order equals $17,840 with a total purchase order amount of $417,840 excluding sales tax.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.7?
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.7, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 15.8, approval of the Heartland Payment Systems LLC Nutrition Service Point of Sale System Contract.
Quick overview, we're looking to replace an outdated point-of-sale system and software. The new system will allow us to do a better job at accepting payments, track inventory, and make better data-driven decisions to approve services for our students. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the board of directors approve the Heartland Payment Systems LLC Nutrition Services Point-of-Sale System Contract TSD-21-102.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 15.8?
I move to adopt 15.8.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 15.8, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. Item number 16, other business. 16.1, approval of resolution number 2097, adopting the 2021-2022
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the board of adopter, Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2091, providing for the adoption of the 2021-22 budget.
Is there a motion to adopt item 16.1?
I have a motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item? Hopefully not. Had plenty of opportunity. I almost feel like you should have had a walk-on song because this is like, since this is a resolution, we will take a roll call vote. So, General Counsel, will you please call the roll?
Yes. President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Bonbright?
Aye.
Director Keating? And Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution passes 4-0.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work on that. Now she needs a walk-off song.
Now she needs to get some sleep.
Item number 17, board comments and reports. We got here relatively quickly tonight. I will start with Vice President Bonbright. Any committee reports, community events, or updates in general?
Wow, I'm trying to think of all the things. June was such a busy month, and July has been as well. But, you know, I know we talked a little bit about graduations the last time, but after that, you know, Director Stroger and I went to the Willie Stewart graduation, which was held in Lincoln, and that was just a magnificent event, and so joyful, and wonderful to be part of an experience like that. So, and I'm trying to think, I, you know, haven't had a whole lot of meetings, but, you know, kind of community meetings that have been held. So, nothing more to add, except for I do know that the city, city council and the mayor, you know, had a appreciation for Superintendent Carla Santorno. So that was special. And I think that there were just other end-of-the-school-year festivities that were, were great all around.
Thank you. Director Keating, any reports tonight?
I don't have any. Well, was just not meeting, most, just taking a break for the summer. And then Superintendent Garcia and I had our federal relations meeting this morning, which we hadn't had for a little bit, just because for, well, there just wasn't a lot to cover at that time. So I don't have a whole lot, other than on Dr. Garcia's first official day, the Silas High School renaming ceremony was an extremely special event. And it just felt very historic. And I think one of the more emotional pieces was seeing Bill Moss and Dolores Silas holding hands, and the fact that both of those women who have given so much to our community were there, are still with us. I don't know. It was really meaningful to see Principal Ray, and Andrea, you up there, and our mayor, and see all of these really powerful Black women was really meaningful. And I just, it was a very special day, and I will, I will remember it for, I'll just always remember it, so.
Thank you. Director Stroger, any comments or reports tonight?
Just a quick, quick shout-out to the young people. There was two, two young people that participated in the academic excellence breakout section of the budget webinar during summer break. One from SOTA, and one from Stadium. And they participated, they gave feedback, they, they spoke with their chest out, said what they meant, and it was just, it was great to see them there participating. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to them because they could have been doing anything on their, on their summertime, so.
That's great. Thank you. I just have a couple things to share tonight. Oh, I already set that one, cross it off. One, just, I don't know, Director Keating is probably aware of this, but the new Silas High School team store is open right now. So if you're interested in buying any Silas High School gear, you should get on that right now. And it was a great event to be a part of and to be at. And it was great to see how many members of the community came out for the renaming. Both just neighbors, former alumni who came from far and wide, up north, in Seattle. So that was just a really great event to be at and to see. I was just thinking earlier, as we were moving through some of our first reading items, reflecting on some of the goals that we set at the beginning of the year, and one of the things that we've been talking about for a number of years, and as part of our goal-setting this year, is just communication. And how do we do a better job of communicating with community? How do we do a better job of getting feedback? And I do echo your comments that Director Keating made earlier about all these different modes of collecting feedback and comment. And without having kind of articulated a strategic communication plan, I feel like if we took stock of some of the things that we've done this year, in addition to us organizing ourselves differently around our email, and having a regular weekly meeting to check in on that, thank you, Tracy, for your help with that. From the comment section on the website, to all of the work that went into the budget development process, to our equity policy review team, I really do think that we've made a lot of strides this year with regard to institutionalizing, better way of communicating, in spite of the fact that we didn't have our, a clear, detailed plan for ourselves articulated. I do think that we made some progress if we sit back and think about it. So I just wanted to note that. And then, just in the same vein of thinking about goals and looking forward, Vice President Bonbright and I and Superintendent Garcia had a great meeting recently to talk about some plans for our upcoming retreat. So I have it on my to-do list to reach out to a couple of you, to be engaged in the agenda, and to leave some sections of that. So I'm saying it out loud right now, so I remember to call you. But I think we have a good retreat plan. It'll, and we're going to get out a little bit to see more parts of our district. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. And to also, as part of that, this next couple of months' process, getting clear about our committee assignments, and starting, and hopefully wrapping up sooner than later, our goal-setting process for the year, so we can kick off the start in a good way. Any other follow-up comments? Vice President Bonbright?
I would just like to say happy birthday to Tracy Jones, who keeps us on the straight and narrow. And on her birthday, she is, again, making us look good. So by having everything ready, and you are just such a fabulous addition to our team, and we appreciate you. So, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Tracy. Okay, we'll move on to item number 18, announcement of future board meetings. We will meet on Monday, August 9, 2021, for, from 12 to 4 for our board retreat, and that will happen at the Lincoln Tree Farm. And then we'll meet on Thursday, August 19, 2021, at 6:00 PM here at CAB for our regular business meeting. Any last comments? Seeing none, then we are adjourned.